Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for January 16th, 2019 to order. At this time, we're going to have our Moment of Silence. And at this time, you know, we see across the country a lot of controversy and a lot of people in a state of flux. There's a lot of federal workers that are looking maybe where their next paycheck come from, there it comes from. There's individuals related to the whole border issues, that turmoil related to that. We have to realize we're all Americans, we're all United States citizens, and we need to care for all the people in our community, in our country, and in our world for that matter. With that in mind, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Brian. You know, again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our City Council, I would like to again welcome all of you and all of those in attendance, and also those reviewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you'll also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you for being here. First of all, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a reminder that we have our first budget workshop this Saturday at 8:30 here in the council chambers.
Thank you very much, and those who are open to the public, we wish and enjoy and invite all of you to attend. We have two public hearings this evening. First is Community Development, and Alderman Rossen will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item under Community Development for a public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed conveyance of a vacant lot at the northwest corner of Fifth and Brady Streets to VZ Properties, Mark Van Zuiden petitioner, 3rd Ward. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, I close this public hearing. Can I have a motion in a second?
Absolutely.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. With that, this public hearing has been closed.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Alderman Dunn will now lead a Public Works public hearing before us now. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specifications and form of contract and estimated cost for the alley resurfacing project between Leclerc Street and Farnham Street from Garfield Street to Columbia Avenue included in the alley resurfacing program. Is there anybody from the public wishing to address this? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. You have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, and that public hearing is closed. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. We have one presentation and one proclamation this evening. First, our presentation, our 2030, June 30th, I mean, 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Audit Review by RSM. I think there, Brian, I mean, Brandon is going to come up and lead that process. I just want you to know that myself and four of our aldermen, the outgoing and incoming Chair and Vice Chair of Finance have already reviewed this material with them and had a good session with them as well after, without the staff there. And now, we're going to hear that, the overall summary. So, Brandon, please.
Yep, yeah, Brandon Wright, CFO and Assistant City Administrator. So, the auditing firm, RSM, has been scrubbing through our books and taking a look at everything over the last several months. They've concluded their work, so our audited financials are completed for fiscal year 2018, which was the period that ended June 30, June 30, 2018. I do want to just recognize the enormous effort that our accounting division puts into putting together all those financial statements, having the auditors around answering all their questions and everything. They do a great job. I have two people here this evening. I have Linda Folland, our Assistant Finance Director, and Basha Gurlock, who's our accounting supervisor. Both of them have put in a lot of effort to this. I want to thank them publicly for all that they've done for that. I'll go ahead now and turn it over to RSM.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Heidi Hopkirk, a partner with RSM, and I led the audit this year. I have with me Jordan Valley, who is the manager, and will be presenting some high-level information as the mayor and Brandon indicated. So, if you'd like to follow along, we did hand out a short presentation. I'm going to start by going over the auditor communication. So first, to let you know as your auditors what we come in and do, and there's three sets of standards that we follow. We look at three areas. The first is the financial statements. You received an unmodified or clean opinion related to those, and that tells you that your financial statements are materially correct, so it's the best opinion that you can receive. Along with that, we look at the internal controls and processes that the city has in place under the government auditing standards, and through that part of the audit, we would report any deficiencies or compliance findings as it relates to the financial statements themselves, which we had none to report this year. The last area we look at is your federal grants and awards and the expenditures in the current year, and that we do a deep dive in what we call major programs. So, in the current year, under that single audit, we looked at two programs, highway planning and construction and the federal transit programs. And as part of that audit, we did have a couple deficiencies that came out, what we would call significant deficiencies, so they're not materially misstating anything, but a level enough to let you know as those charged with governance about. The first one was over some reporting related to the schedule of federal awards and some identifying numbers there, which was corrected, so within the final report, they were corrected, but it was something we found through the audit process. And then also related to a program, certified payroll reports were not received timely and reviewed as required under the program. So that was reported as a deficiency and a compliance finding as part of that program. Otherwise, everything else that we reviewed, there's many procedures that we look at as part of those grants. There was no other areas that we reported anything over. In the current year, within your financial statements, you did adopt two new accounting standards, so I do want to point those out. The first one is related to post-employment benefits, and because this required an accounting change, your opinion does reference a restatement within that as an emphasis of matter. But that restatement is not due to an error, it's due to that implementation of a new standard and how your accounting for those post-employment benefits went from a funding perspective. So what did we, what were required to pay during the year, and what did we pay, and is there a difference that needs to be recorded? Versus now, under the new standard, there's a liability for that unfunded portion of that benefit that has to be recorded as a long-term liability for the city. So due to that change in accounting, there was a restatement. There was also a standard that was implemented that you got to stop doing something. I will let you know that it's very rare in the accounting world, but as part of your enterprise funds, they no longer have to take a portion of their interest paid on debt and capitalize it as part of a capital project. So that was something that was removed this year that was normally noted in the past in the footnotes and part of the capital asset number, and that will no longer occur due to the change in the standard. As always, your statements have management judgments and estimates. We do review those that are significant, and we had no concerns with any of those estimates used by management in the current year. There were a couple audit adjustments as part of the process. The details are in the deliverables to you, nothing of overall concern for us. And then, we had no significant issues that we discussed with management, nor did we have any disagreements with management through the process or encounter any difficulties performing the audit. So, at that, I would also like to thank Linda and the accounting department and others throughout the city who provide us information. It's a lot of hard work on their end to give us all that information so we are able to complete the audit, so I also want to thank them. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jordan, and he'll go over some financial information.
Thank you. The financial information that we're going to cover, we'll start with the revenue of the governmental funds. So this will be your general fund, your special revenue fund, debt service, and capital project funds. Overall, within those funds, there was approximately $4.8 million increase, or about 3% in total revenue. Some causes for those increases were due to taxes. There was an increase of approximately $2.2 million. This was due to the increase in assessed value, which then resulted in the increase of taxes collected on the property. Another item that saw an increase was fines and forfeitures. There was approximately a 63% increase there, about $960,000, which was due to increased revenue for speed cameras, fines levied on those. In the prior year, those were shown as a past adjustment, but in the current year, those were grossed up and shown as a revenue and an expense for the service, for the collections, and then the services provided related to those. So that's what's driving that increase there. And the last significant increase was in the other category. There was an increase of approximately $1.2 million, which is due to a TIF refund repayment. An entity did not meet all of the criteria to earn the funds, and that, those funds were then returned to the city. Looking at it from the expenditure side, they increased approximately $7.3 million, or about 4% increase in total. There were a couple items of note there. The community and economic development had approximately a $4.6 million increase. That was largely driven by additional federal programs that the city was providing and putting on, so the city was being reimbursed for those additional expenditures that they were putting on. Another area of note was, which would also largely be driven related to federal programs and reimbursements, was capital outlay. There was an increase of approximately $2.3 million. This is one that fluctuates year to year based on the projects that are going on within the city and the funding that's being received. The current year, there was an increase related to the street and road projects that have been going on within the city over the past year. The next statement will look at the statements of revenue expenses and changes in fund net position of the enterprise funds. Within those, the operating revenue increased approximately $4 million, or about 10%. The reasons for that were due to an increase in sewer rates of 5%, which equated to about a $2.5 million increase in sewer revenues, as well as the River Center having an additional $1 million for charges for services that they've provided. Operating expenses also had a similar, well, not quite as big of any, increase of about $1.7 million, so about a 3.5% increase. Those were driven by a $1.4 million increase in supplies and services, of which approximately $1 million of that was related to the costs of doing the additional services at the River Center. So, some revenue being driven there with offsetting costs. The operating loss decreased about $2.2 million in the current year. Within this decrease, because these are presented on the full accrual basis, there is a depreciation recorded. In the current year, it was about $11.6 million of an expense, and that is a non-cash expense for the city. So once you back that out, there's an income of approximately $4.5 million there in those The last item I would like to call your guys' attention to is the general fund fund balance. This is an item that is typically looked at for liquidity. The fund balance of the general fund was approximately $20.8 million, of which 11.5, or 55%, was in an unassigned fund balance, so the city has no commitments or no ties with that money, so that it can be used for any purpose. The assigned fund balance was designated by the CFO, was approximately $4.4 million, or 21% of that fund balance. The restricted, which is put a restriction on by an external party typically related to grants or laws or legislation, that's approximately $4.7 million, and that's a 23% of the fund balance. And then, the remaining 11,000 is in non-spendable, which was the prepaid for the city. With that, I would like to ask for any questions, if anyone has any related to any of the financial information.
I would just make a comment as you go through there. I want to thank Alderman Tompkins, McGinnis, Mattson, and Clul, who met with myself and you, and we went into this in much, much more detail. So thank you for the summary, and you did a great job with that, and more importantly, I want to thank Brandon, Linda, and the staff for doing a great job as well, which is extremely important. So, do any of my colleagues have any questions? Again, this was an unqualified, meaning a clean audit, and we want to thank you for that, and thank you for the work of the city, so. Any questions? Seeing none, and do you have anything? Heidi, you have anything?
Just thank you for having us, and if you do have any follow-up questions, feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, and Alderman Mattson is going to lead that process and that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. So proclamation. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the unalienable right to freedom, and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution making slavery illegal, and whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, claiming millions of victims worldwide, and found in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, and debt bondage, and whereas this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom, and fuels organized crime, does exist in every city, and whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolated nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators, and whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, the efforts by our local community to promote the yearly Observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enacts one of the examples of the continuous commitment in the United States, and especially the state of Iowa, to increase awareness of and to actively eradicate human trafficking. And whereas the city of Davenport joins Breaking Traffic, a program of family resources in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, and comprehensive services to survivors of human trafficking. So there, now therefore we, Frank Klipsch, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and do urge all citizens to join in this observance, date this 16th day of January. I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. I think we're going to have, first of all, Elise Harden, Austin McLean, and Maggie Tinsman will accept the proclamation. Okay, somebody want to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Good evening. I'm Maggie Tinsman, founder of Breaking Traffic, and currently the Chair of Breaking Traffic Advisory Council and Secretary of the Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery, which is a statewide organization. On behalf of Family Resources Breaking Traffic Program, supervised by Elise Harden, and Austin is also outreach, a very important person for here in Scott County, we would like to thank Mayor Klipsch and the council for recognizing the problem of human trafficking by issuing this proclamation. This organization was formed with the purpose of working toward abolishing all forms of human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration. So we look forward to working with the council and law enforcement. As a matter of fact, your Chief of Police is on our, Chief is on our advisory council as well. So, work with the police and the many agencies and concerned local citizens of Davenport to end trafficking in our community. As you might know or not know, the average age of those young women who are trafficked is age 13. Creighton University in Omaha has done a study of all states on human trafficking based on social media and sex trafficking websites, and at any given time in Iowa, there are 200 human trafficking victims actively being trafficked. In the course of a year in Iowa, there are 800 individuals trafficked, indentured servants or sex victims. So a lot of these people are brought into Iowa and then moved to another location. Still, many are Iowans. In fact, Family Resources Breaking Traffic Program has served locally 68 survivors of human trafficking just this year. I also ask you to consider passing an ordinance on licensing massage parlors, and I've talked to your Chief of Police on this. There are 14 Iowa cities, major cities, including Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, have adopted the city ordinance for massage parlors so that we can assure that the public is safe in these massage parlors. Now, I'm not against massage parlors, actually, I like massage, but it's making them safe for everyone. We have found that human trafficking has been found, particularly in massage parlors in Des Moines and Cedar Rapids. Again, I would just want to thank you for the passage of slavery and human trafficking, prevention and awareness proclamation, and I ask you to consider a massage parlor ordinance at a later date. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and let's give them a round of applause for all their hard work. And just as a clarification, that ordinance work is underway as we speak. So, thank you all very much, and we've seen that and are working on doing that as well. Our next item is petitions and communication from the council and myself. I just want to note, again, I want to, first of all, introduce Alderman McGinnis. She has taken over the role of Community Engagement Chair. She's going to be feeding us throughout the year updated information and a variety of information, and so I'm going to have her lead this discussion and then turn it on to others in the, of my colleagues who want to make some announcements or statements this evening. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll try to be brief. I just wanted to, as our city administrator mentioned, our first budget meeting for the upcoming 2020 budget, which will take effect in July, we have to start early on this, July 1st, is this Saturday, and we've been told we'll be there, right Cory? Snow or no snow, so we'll be here. What we're going to be dealing with, we're going to be doing this over the next three Saturdays. They start at 8:30, they start in this chamber. There is not public input in these meetings, but you, but public is certainly invited, and there are breaks, and there's time after to talk to council people. So we're going to be talking about three different, covering three different topics over these next three Saturdays, and this Saturday, we're going to be covering our operating budget, which is sort of the people part of budgeting. Our capital budget is more the projects, but we'll be talking about the operating budget, and that starts at 8:30 and goes until usually about noon or a little before, right here in the city council. The next week, and next Saturday, we'll be talking about the capital budget, and then the last week, February 2nd, we'll be talking about the work plan and what the city's work will be in the year, and also sort of a rep of a budget discussion. So you're welcome to any and all of those, please join us. This is an important part, this is how the, this is how we, how the city runs, is on the, your taxes and other kinds of revenue, and this is how it's spent, so it's important work. I wanted to mention a couple events that are coming up this weekend. The ICE extravaganza is Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's free during the daytime, and then there, it's at the Freight House, and that's, that's all free, but then there is an after-party that is from 6:00 to 8:00, and the pre, if you buy your tickets early, that's $10, and if you buy them later, it's 15. And if you want more information, you can call 563-823-2681. So, if we can get out of our houses on the weekend, on Saturday, please try the, try the ICE extravaganza, it was lots of fun last year for sure, and I'm sure it will be this year. And then tomorrow night, at the River Center, the Davenport Schools Career Night Expo will be taking place, and that's from 5:00 to 8:30. Now, this is for middle and high school students and their parents. You know, it's never too early to start thinking about what people might be doing in their lives, and there'll be businesses and program booths there, so students can start to learn about, you know, career paths and things like that. Very important, you know, to our youth, and very important to, you know, of course, retain young people here in Iowa. And so, if you know anyone, any student or a parent that might not know about this, or if you've got a student in those grades, please, please come and join tomorrow night, the Davenport Schools Career Night Expo from 5:00 to 8:30. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, and we're looking at bringing more information about what's happening in the city and how people can get engaged with activities that we're doing, so stay tuned for more. Our next, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I wanted to thank Maggie Tinsman for her leadership on this matter. I can remember when she first came to the City Council several years ago on this human trafficking, and I was naive, I didn't, I was shocked when she came to the council and talked about it originally, but it is such a huge problem, it's, it's, it's so overwhelming. Yeah, I'm surprised, but I'm, you know, the people of Iowa and Davenport got to be thankful for Maggie's leadership in this matter, so thanks, Maggie.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to share that on Monday, January 28th, that I will be having an 8th ward meeting at 6:30 at KSI, and our Parks Director, Chad Dyson, will be presenting on what's going on in our Parks Department. So if you are around, and hopefully it won't be snowing that night, please come join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we move into budget discussions, I just want to, kind of on behalf of Alderman Clul and myself, as we move into the finance realm, thank Alderwoman Tompkins and Alderwoman McGinnis, as they did great work in this last year working with our staff and the audit folks to make sure we're tracking, and hopefully we'll try and do as well as they did. So thank you two for your work there.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on council member Ambrose's comments about Maggie Tinsman. Before Maggie Tinsman came to the council to talk about the issue, she, Senator Tinsman spoke before the legislature, and when she first brought this up with the state legislature, the legislature said, "This doesn't happen in Iowa, it doesn't happen." Maggie Tinsman pointed out that it certainly did, and she got the whole thing started in the state of Iowa, and just an incredible presence. We're so lucky to have former Senator Tinsman here still advocating for all of us.
Thank you very much, and I would just say again, as the grandfather of 10, I think the average age of my grandchildren are 13. And when she mentioned that statistics, it's pretty sobering to think at the average age of someone being trafficked, predominantly women, young girls, but also men and boys and girls. It's something we all need to be very vigilant about as well. Let's move on to the action items for discussion on our agenda. The first area is going to be community development. Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have several items on, with seven items on the agenda this evening. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case LL18-01, being the nomination of the Davenport Public Library Edward Durrell Stone Building located at 321 Main Street for designation as a local historic landmark. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ18-16, request of Rob Davis with Bush Construction to rezone 5.93 acres, more or less a property located north of East 58th Street and east of Utica Ridge Road from CO Office Shop District to R5M Medium Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Go ahead and come up and to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Jean Wolf Lakehurst. Thank you all for letting me express my opposition to REZ 18-16 for 5.93 acres to be changed from CO to medium density. One of the challenges facing many of the homeowners regarding this rezoning is what it will take to convince eight of you sitting at that table to support us in keeping this green space feeling residential. This process is probably very familiar for all of you and for Bush Construction, but it's a brand-new experience for the homeowners and many of us who have paid taxes for decades. This process for me has been like running a race without knowing all the rules. The goal line is to keep the land aligned with the single-family homes like the neighborhoods around it, and what we're not sure of is how we're supposed to run this race. In other words, how many protest forums would it take? How many people do we need to invite to the city council to oppose this change? We feel like we've been invited to the race pretty late in the game, and that most of our team has gone south for the winter during these cold months, and don't realize that this rezoning of a multi-story building with 62 or more residents is going to be a significant change when they return. Their belief is from what they were told in the past that when this land was developed, this property would probably be single-family homes. Another challenge is believing that the council does support homeowners. Home and condo owners at the corner of 53rd and Eastern lost their protest to a very significant car dealership where the land was stripped and not one tree was left standing. East of that, on 53rd, the homes south of there were razed completely for another restaurant, Portillo's, and the homeowners felt they were not supported either, as were those who lived near Costco. Homeowners protested south of Utica Ridge near the Y, but the multi-story building with increased density was approved. We lost our protest a few months ago to another beauty salon just south of the one that's being proposed at this time on Utica Ridge. So in many cases, homeowners are feeling discouraged and feeling that the planning and zoning committee in the city council doesn't have the significant interest as we do in keeping our neighborhoods intact. The opposition process is pretty complicated and time-consuming, and most of the results have not supported homeowners. You've heard many reasons for denying rezoning for this multi-story 62-unit building, and in summary, these are a few. Increased traffic on an already potholed, brittle Utica Ridge. Water in the Lakehurst area continues to leak into basements, sidewalks, driveways, and streets. And this time of year, it's not water, it's ice. Backyards continue to be lost to erosion from drainage throughout the neighborhood. Developers decades ago did not address this water problem when the homes were initially built. In some cases, there is issues with sewage backing up in homes. So now this city council is left with the responsibility to be proactive about the increased water and the traffic problems that will result, as a result of this change. Currently, there's almost six acres of rain-absorbing soil east of Utica Ridge, and this will all be replaced by concrete. Water issues will increase, and the infrastructure does not exist to sustain the significant change. The vast majority of homeowners affected by this change have no idea what's being planned, and they're counting on you to help them and to keep their single-family neighborhoods. Wildlife and fields have provided respite for homeowners for decades. There are geese, deer, hawks, owls, and even occasional eagle who call this space home. Driving north from all the congestion, the stress, tailgating, and the headaches on 53rd, when you do head north on Utica Ridge, this space is like a breath of fresh air. People feel they are home. We're trying to run this race as effectively as we can, but we need your help. When you leave this meeting and go home tonight, think about the quality of your home life experience. Think about how that would be changed if instead of seeing your yard or the green space you come home to, there's a multi-story 62-unit building standing right next to your house. I urge you to vote no for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Rayburn, and my wife and I own a home, a villa, at 5814 Crow Valley Park Drive. So our villa is on the east side of the property that we're, that's in question here. Our living room faces out onto the property. It's slightly different than the properties to the north, where the garages face out onto the property. In a perfect world, it would be great if this could stay like it is. But we knew when we bought our property that at some point it would be developed. We understood at the time that the maximum height would be 25 feet, and we did expect it would probably be, you know, one-story commercial or one-story single-family homes. But my understanding is that that zoning has now changed, and the property owner can develop it however they see fit within the rules, up to 35 feet. So it's my understanding that in the zoning requests that they have, they've got the ability to now build a four-story building, which is what they're asking for. And as I looked at the plan, the four-story building is in basically the southwest corner of the property, which is really about as far away from either the north or the east property owners. And in a perfect world, I would love that it wasn't going to be there. But it seems to me like I would much rather trade off a four-story building, you know, on that corner as far away from the other properties versus if they are denied, then at that point, they could build, they could build several 35-foot buildings. And my understanding is that instead of having 60 units, the density would actually go up to, you know, maybe 90 or 100 units. So I think I would ask you to consider that. My preference would be if it is to stay where it is, would be that there could be some understanding and some restriction so that the green space that they're going to leave between the buildings and the northern property owners and eastern property owners would stay undeveloped. And also, if they say it's going to be a four-story building, that doesn't mean four stories on top of a garage. So right now, I mean, if it's four stories, it should be four stories from the current ground level. And, I mean, it is abrupt. I mean, it's not transitional. If you look, if you drive that area, it's a lot higher than I think any of us ever anticipated. But it's going to get developed, and if it's going to be developed, I would rather see it developed on that corner and have the northern and eastern sides be left as green as possible. And also, obviously, to have it be landscaped as well as possible. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? State your name and address.
My name is Benjamin Loeb. I live at, on 59th Street, 3955 East 59th Street. And I would characterize myself as very pro-growth. I also realized when I moved into the neighborhood that this lot would be developed, but I did not expect that it would be proposed, that we would have this huge four-story monstrosity right on Utica Ridge. This will be an enormous eyesore. For me, exiting 59th Street, I would be facing a building that's larger than any other in the neighborhood, certainly bigger than anything in the commercial area on 53rd Street. As has been mentioned, this is a transitional area, yet we would have a building that is bigger than even those in the commercial area. We have a street right there on Utica Ridge Road that has currently two lanes with gravel shoulders. This is currently, as I understand, being examined for traffic and for speed. And I know, having run and ridden bicycles with my children, this is not a safe area. I also know, having waited at 59th and Utica Ridge Road, it's extremely difficult right now with 45 mile-per-hour speed limits to turn on to Utica Ridge Road. Certainly adding this kind of density is only going to make things worse. The current layout of this building, we've talked about the green space there, the current layout, the proposed layout of the building, has the building right on Utica Ridge, blocking whatever green space there is behind to any view. So this is going to significantly affect, destroy, the visuals coming out of Lakehurst and driving up along Utica Ridge. I live far enough away from this property, more than 200 feet, that I didn't get the obligatory notice of opportunity to protest. But when I heard that there was this opportunity to come to one of my aldermen's meetings, I did, and I took this opportunity to express my views. Of the 15 to 25 people in attendance, you could say that there was near-unanimous opposition, near-unanimous opposition to this zoning request change. Nobody wants the potential of a 70-foot building, which is what this zone change would allow. Nobody wants that. We talked about various compromises, but even a four-story building would be a marked change in the construction. I would just say, in closing, this is an unnecessary project. It would drastically change our neighborhood, and I urge you very strongly to vote no.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to comment on this item? Anyone? Please step up. Name and address.
Hello. My name is Ann Friedman. I'm at 4105 East 60th Street, directly north of this proposed project. I'm not in favor of it. I feel the rezoning from the CT to the RMF would be inappropriate for this neighborhood, which is primarily CT, formerly CO zone. Am I able to read for another resident who could not be here? Is that okay?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Thank you. This is for Sue and Craig Gable. They live at 5907 Utica Ridge Road. And I will, I'll speak as I'm speaking, like I'm her. Our driveway with four condos abuts the Bush property on the north side. Craig and I have lived there for 24 years. They knew at some point it would be developed. Putting myself in the, as a potential buyer developer, it is surrounded by three, surrounded on three sides by residential homes. There are single-story businesses within two-block, a two-block area, then a couple bank buildings closer to 53rd, which are taller. The homes surrounding the area are very well-maintained by property owners. They've increased the value, enhanced the value of this land that Bush would like to build on. I would not have the imagination or the creativity to believe that a four-story 62-unit structure would snuggle into the confines of a CO CT zone community. We are good neighbors, have taken care of the property along the north berm since they moved in 24 years ago. At that time, that property was not taken care of on a regular basis and looked unkept. We, the people, are, as well, we are this community. We just don't have big signs in our yards with our names on it. We have no objection to this property being developed. We do have an objection to anything exceeding 35 feet or the CT zoning. A four-story 62-unit building is monolithic in size for this area. Would you be able to remain silent and allow a change to zoning for a four-story 50 to 70-foot structure that would look totally out of place as you drive up Utica Ridge? The Wells Fargo and American Bank Buildings on the corner of 53rd and Utica Ridge are 39 feet high. The other commercial buildings within a two-to-three-block area have respectfully maintained the 25-foot zoning. This, excuse me, this project requesting a zoning change is out of scope and does not transition into this area. Utica Ridge is a lovely corridor in our city. We, the people, have a voice. We respectfully request that you deny Bush's proposed zoning request and keep the CT zoning as passed at the city council meeting on January 9th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to come up? State your name and address.
My name is Lynn Gibson. I'm with Bush Construction and representing the applicant tonight. You've been hearing from Rob Davis, but unfortunately, he is ill. And I do thank you, and thank the neighbors for their comments in this process. As you know, we are asking for a residential multifamily zoning for this property.
He'll get it working for you here in a second.
Corner of 58th and Utica Ridge is, we're going to see here in a bit, and the neighbors have just mentioned, we've had many conversations internally, externally, talking to neighbors and talking to Alderman Cluell, and understanding that the height of this building, among other concerns, the height seems to be the biggest concern. So, working to try and be a good neighbor and identify different options, which I'd like to share with you tonight. What you see here is our current plan, and this was submitted with the residential multifamily request. Currently, this ground is zoned under the new language that passed last week, is zoned commercial transitional, allowing for up to 35 feet. Our request for multifamily would allow 70 feet, although our proposed building is somewhere in the 50 to 53-foot range at this time. As we're proposing right now, asking for the rezoning, you see that the building is placed on the southwest corner, which we believe has the least amount of impact because it creates the most amount of green space next to the Crow Valley Villas neighborhood. It also is a 62-unit building. I can't comment on the traffic on Utica Ridge. I live over there and work over there, too. It's bad. And that's a city issue to discuss. But again, least amount of impact, keeping it the furthest away from the closest neighbors. We are directly across the street from Lakehurst, with all due respect to those folks. When they leave their neighborhood, they're going to see a tall building. It's a very big change, and we respect that. The majority of the Lakehurst homes are oriented with a north-south orientation. Their front yard, backyard is north-south. There is, if I can get my pointer right here, a pretty large tree line here, but he's right. Driving out of the neighborhood, he will see that building, and we respect their concerns. So this option is what we're asking for, for the rezoning. If the rezoning does not pass, if you do not choose to accept the recommendation of your planning and zoning group, then it remains CT under the new language. And I wanted to, let's see here, a couple of scenarios here for you. That is still a residential application on CT ground. That is still co-ops, which is what we're proposing to build there, but it's a second building. Those would be, at the height restriction of 35 feet, they would be three stories. Our PERFORMA and our investor requirements are met at four stories and 62 units. To do this means a second building at three stories and 90 units. We obviously are still trying to create green space, but for the residents, to us, this creates maybe a less desirable impact, but that is not for me to say. So that is an option. At commercial transitional, leaving the zoning as it is, we are allowed to build to 35 feet, as you know, and we would build most likely a site plan, something like this, with two buildings. And again, the negative here is that we're pushing up against the neighbors, and we have much less green space. And again, increased density means increased traffic. So 62 versus roughly 90 in this scenario. That is only a concept, and I caution people from getting too attached to it. We haven't done a full design. I realize you'd love to see a full design and a full site plan. Until this is fully rezoned and we know what we're going to be allowed to build, we can't turn the architect and the engineer loose to do that because of the cost associated with that. So right now, this is a concept. And we are looking to the north here, and so that is the site of the building that would face Utica Ridge. Underground parking and four stories of senior living, 55 and up. It's got a flat roof. This building, as I said, is approximately 50 to 53 feet tall. A flat roof is helpful, as opposed to a peaked roof, say, at the condos at Crow Creek and Utica Ridge, has a peaked roof, makes the building look taller yet. So that's a concept design that I didn't exactly intend to show right at that moment, but we'll skip ahead to this. This is a commercial application. If the multifamily zoning does not pass, and we have to leave it as C2, we are, we could do it as a commercial project. And those are four commercial buildings. Based on city requirement and code, we would likely have parking for up to 350, 350 cars there. And that's the third option, and in our opinion, biggest impact.
Thank you. Is that the end of your presentation?
It is, and I apologize for.
No, no problem. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public would like to, come on up, ma'am? State your name and address for the record.
I'm Fran Truitt. I live at 5905 Utica Ridge Road, just north of the property. I see that we are voting for, to rezone this from CO to R5M. Well, it's no longer CO, so does that have to be, do they have to go for rezoning again? And there's no such thing as. no such thing as R-five M, so is this zoning request still valid?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Glenn Simmons, forty-eleven East Fifty-Ninth Street. I've been there probably longer than anybody. Everything was cornfields. But my question is, if they get the change, what are the guarantees that they don't go to seventy feet? What are the guarantees that they only build one building rather than two? You know, these are things that have to be considered. Once they have the change in designation, are there guarantees that they don't go to the other height and, a higher height than other, a second building? That'd be my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Before I ask council, can I just have a staff person come up and, and cover the zoning pieces that the, the young woman mentioned here, as well as what does happen down the road if this zoning gets done? Kind of some parameters that can be put in place as far as the building and landscaping and things like that?
A number of questions, but first of all, Matt Flynn from the Community Planning and Economic Development Department. One of the questions, most recent one, was that when the application came in, that's why we were talking about the old zoning realm, which was commercial office with a proposed rezoning to R-five M. Now, the, the code has, new code has been adopted. If you look at the proposed conditions in the ordinance, it does state that in the event that the rezoning is approved, that the zoning would, would be R-five M. So, that was, that was the most recent question. Generally, under zoning with no, no conditions attached, yes, you, a, a entity would be able to build basically anything up to the maximum under a zoning classification. However, as, as, as the council certainly knows is that, you know, it is possible to impose conditions upon rezoning. Iowa's fairly unique throughout the nation with having the ability to do that. So, that remains an option for the council. And that can involve a maximum height, maximum, really any physical element to the, to the structure. And again, now that we've turned the page to the new ordinance, we want to, I think it's fair to say that we, we want to, if not limit the number of conditions, have better control, make sure that when they are imposed are for good reasons.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. That was it. You covered the two individuals that came to the podium. Thank you. Now, anyone from council would like to comment? Alderwoman Dickman?
Thank you. I was wondering if someone from staff, someone had mentioned the drainage issue, and we fairly recently adopted a new drainage policy, so there would be someone from staff who could come up and address that. Brian, drew the short straw? Yeah, the, 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 it would not increase drainage problems because, hopefully because of the ordinance or the changes that we've made recently.
Absolutely. Brian Shad, Public Works Department, sorry. Any, any new development nowadays, obviously have to comply with our stormwater management ordinance, which includes water quality management. The inch and a half, or the inch and a quarter storm has to remain on-site through infiltration, percolating back into the groundwater. These will all be certainly looked at as plans came forward for review.
Thank you.
Alderman Clu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question. What, what, what stipulations, what requirements are in place beyond city code that we ensure that nothing that is developed in the city of Davenport somehow impinges on property outside of the intended building site?
I would reference that to the Iowa drainage laws, and our, our stormwater ordinance actually builds on those as well. So, it'd be the standards imply that increasing or causing a damaging flow downstream.
There is a concern in the area that there's a high water table, and folks do have some drainage issues there in their basements. Do those people in the surrounding area have any concern in terms of additional water being pushed towards them from this development?
Not seeing final design plans at this point. It's a little difficult to comment on that, but I would say that groundwater is a different animal than stormwater. And, you know, groundwater tables do change over time. I would not see this increasing the groundwater as it would be sent to either our stormwater, storm sewer system, or ditch drainage.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. If I may continue?
Please do.
I, I told the council that I was going to hold a ward meeting with, with residents on Monday, and in fact, we did that, and the folks in the front row over here were, were all there, as was Jean. We had about twenty-five people there, and it was a, was a good meeting. We talked about a lot of things. I, I started out the conversation by trying to lay out some groundwork for what currently exists, some of the discussions that I've had with other neighbors. A couple of things right up front. I cannot support the RMF zoning, the proposed RMF zoning, which was RM-five, not because I don't believe that Bush is going to build beyond the four stories that they indicated, but this building, once it is fully occupied, will be turned over to co-op owners, and they then will make decisions about what's going to happen to the remainder of the property. Additionally, if the, if Bush does not reach fifty percent occupancy in advance of construction, they would probably decide not to build, in which case, worst-case scenario, they could sell that to another developer. That developer then, if the council were to approve the RMF zoning, would have the opportunity to build unfettered to seventy feet. And there's not a whole lot that the council could do at, at that point. So, for those reasons, I, I will not support standalone RMF zoning change. But I, I did talk to folks a bit about some of the alternatives. And let me say again upfront that several months ago, we had a zoning change just north of Fifty-sixth for an acre and a half, which was CO, and the council approved that as a C-one, changed to C-one. Did that because it was very close to an arterial, Utica Ridge, and it seemed appropriate for, at the time. It still does. However, at the time, I also told residents in the villas that I would not in any way support zoning up from CO or now CT, because I felt that that land surrounding the villas was important to keep in a transitional type of situation. So, I am committed to, to supporting that, and I will continue to do that. But I think it's important for folks to, to look at this closely, and, and I, I challenge you to, to do that, to think about it. Because I, I did go out, I have been to a couple of homes, including a home on, on Crow Valley Park Drive, which is the east part of where the building is proposed. And so, one of the comments on Monday night was, what are you willing to pay for ten feet? And it was really the reason that I wanted to have the meeting, because I, as I said, I support the CT, because that's what I've, I've promised before. But if there's a better opportunity, I want people to consider it. And so, this, the second option that Lynn mentioned was the two, three-story buildings, both at thirty-five feet, which is CT. There would be no need for a zoning change at all if that were, that were the case, that they would go that direction. That, in many ways, is, is exactly what it ought to be. It's transitional. You don't have that four-story sticking up there. You've got three-story, ten-foot, ten-foot, but still more in a transitional mode. But, you know, you, you think about it, and you look, as I looked out the, the back window, the living room window of the house on Crow Valley Park Drive, recognized that that three-story building is pretty close to their back window. It's certainly going to have an impact to those folks on that drive. Now, those folks were within the protest zone, and I think we only reached about eight-point-five percent protest, if I'm correct. And so, they, they certainly had the opportunity. It, it didn't happen. But still, I, I cannot discount the fact that that's going to be a significant impact if the, if Bush were to withdraw their RM-five request and move to CT. So, there's that. There's the, the loss of, of green space in terms of additional building square footage. The cost of, of services is going to increase. And one of the things that comes up, second of all, after height, is the issue of traffic. An additional thirty families there is going to put additional pressure on Fifty-eighth Street, Utica Ridge. That is certainly something to consider. So, I just want folks to consider this, because we've still got a couple of weeks left before we make a decision, is, is what is the cost of ten feet? If, if Bush Construction were willing to accept a couple of covenants, the first covenant being that they would not build over four stories, one. Number two, that the density that is currently being presented for the four-story building would not be exceeded on the five-point-nine-three acres. In effect, that would mean that that building would be all that would be built there. There would not be any further residential buildings built. Would that be acceptable to people, given the loss of green space and the increased traffic? So, I, I put that out there as something to think about. If they were willing to accept those covenants, and I think that they would, would that be something that would be more desirable than having two thirty-five-foot-tall buildings out there in its place? So, those are, those are issues that, you know, I wanted to bring up. I, I, I will support CT if that's what the neighbors want, but I want folks to think about the possibility that maybe, although it's the first option, the second option is four stories, that it might be better than having thirty-five-foot buildings or possibly commercial, you know, type of businesses there in that area, which I don't think would be, it certainly fits within the code, CT code. They could certainly do that. But in my way of thinking, having businesses, commercial vendors there that close to the property line would be problematic. So, I appreciate Bush's coming forward with alternatives. I think that it respects the neighborhood. I think it's options that they're willing to present. I, I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the time that neighbors have spent with me talking, and certainly if you want to get together again to talk, I would be willing to do that. I'm committed to CT unless I hear from neighbors otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your emails. I did also attend the session, the meeting on Monday night, and listened to neighbors, you know, talk about their concerns and answer questions, and I appreciated that opportunity that Alderman Clu provided as well. I, you know, when this property was recently rezoned to CT, to CT, that gave the owner of the property many more options perhaps than they had in the old, under the old zoning code. I am, remain unconvinced that a rezoning further to, to what is being requested is appropriate for this area. I understand the neighbors' concerns about what good is a condition that could be overturned by later council. You know, the, the caveats that might be put in, in a, in a rezoning. And, you know, I understand that, because in just my short time on council, I've certainly seen requests coming forward to change conditions on properties, and we did vote that down when that came to us. So, yes, this, this would continue to allow change. I believe in our new zoning ordinance. It is one, again, we just passed. I know there will be changes, but I remain unconvinced and remain not in favor of this, and, and so, but no, because I would like to see it stay as it is, which is CT. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Manson?
Thank you, Alderwoman Rawson. So, listening to stuff, and last time, we had some discussion, and then we asked Alderman Clu to have the meeting, and so he did, and he talked to folks. But the thing that keeps coming back seems to be the height. And so, just throwing out again, ideas and thoughts, if we put the condition of whatever the Bush folks are saying, fifty-three feet or whatever that is, if we would say, okay, we would go to the RM-five, but we put the condition that it must not exceed fifty-three feet, maybe that is a thought to think about, that we add that condition. So, they say they're going to do it, let's just put that on there and make sure, then that alleviates, because I thank Bush for presenting some options and some alternative understanding. Just from my perspective, I would rather have the fifty-three option farther away and still preserve green space in that northern-east section. So, just for your consideration and for folks' consideration, if we go to RM-five, maybe we put the condition of fifty-three feet that still meets Bush and, and maybe still has an understanding for the neighbors and still preserves green space. So, I'm throwing that out, discussion. We'll see next week where we go, and if people are open to doing that, then I'd be certainly willing to support that. Thank you.
Alderman Clu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if the representative from Bush Construction might come up to the podium and address your understanding as to whether or not Bush might consider the two covenants that I mentioned?
Yes. However, it would make sense to write it to make sure that it has staying power in teeth. Again, with all due respect to the neighbors and their concerns, and, and wanting to, to make the least impact here, we do believe that four stories is, is the best and the least impact and the most green space, as you mentioned. So, limiting the height with covenants or zoning change language or, or whatever it would take would be absolutely acceptable. And limiting the density, meaning no further buildings could be built, is a little more problematic. Not that we would say no to it. It would just take a little research to make sure we wrote it correctly. As, as you mentioned, at the end of this process, we turn the ownership of the building over to the sixty-two shareholders. So, we want to make sure it's written correctly, and those details, you know, that's probably for an attorney, not for me. But, short answer again, long answer is yes.
Thank you. Are, are you finished, Alderman Clu? You want to hit your light?
I do have a further question.
Okay.
And actually, it's a comment that if Bush Construction were to accept those two covenants, those would be part of the zoning ordinance. They would not go away. They would live with the land were it to be sold to another purchaser. True, the council could overturn that. The council has a lot of, of opportunity to do things like that. Would they do it? I expect that they would not.
Anyone else from council? All right. We'll go ahead and put this item on discussion then. Next item, second consideration, ordinance for case REZ eighteen dash seventeen, request of Tim Schaefer, Dale Service Center to rezone nineteen fifteen Zenith Avenue from R-four moderate-density dwelling district to C-two general commercial district. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? I see no one coming this direction, so anyone from council? Everyone's leaving. We just lost half our audience. Anyone from council for this item? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four, the second consideration ordinance for case REZ eighteen dash nineteen, request of St. Ambrose University for rezoning from R-four moderate-density dwelling district and C-two general commercial district to PID, Planned Institutional District, on point-six-seven-five acres, more or less, and an amendment to a PID Planned Institutional District- an amendment to a PID Planned Institutional District Land Use Plan for the property located west of Harrison Street, north of West Locust Street, east of Brown Street, and south of West Lombard Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number five, resolution for case F18-17, being the request of Michael Richmond with Townsend Engineering for a final plat of a three-lot subdivision located north of Hickory Grove Road between North Thornwood Avenue and North Lincoln Avenue. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number six, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the certified local government forms supporting the proposed National Register Historic Places, Davenport Eastside Industrial and Motor Row Historic District. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? And I'd like to ask someone from staff to come up and just give a brief description of what this is, because it's pretty exciting.
Bruce Berger, your Community Planning and Economic Development Director. This is, I think, the first phase maybe of a consultant that was hired by the downtown Davenport Partnership Board to study a new historic district properties, set of properties in the downtown. And I think this is the result of the first batch of research that they pulled together. As you can see from your app, it's kind of on the south and east portion of the downtown. It hasn't quite abut up against the warehouse district thoroughly, but it's a very strong supportive application. What this means for property owners, it's really a net positive, because if somebody wants to do something in that area, I mean, it brings attention to it. The National Register status will allow the ability to go after some historic tax credits, both at the state and the national level. And it doesn't, you know, really provide any, from the downside standpoint of, gosh, are there things I can't do with it, there really isn't anything new that it presupposes upon an existing owner. And I look somewhat at Alderman McGinnis, she's even more of an expert on some of these details than I am, so.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rawson. I just wanted to say how excited I am about this. And if you think about it, and I have known about this, and I want to thank the downtown Davenport Partnership for their leadership on this, there hopefully is more to come downtown. We have a number of historic districts all over the city, 18 or 19 now, and this will be another. And, you know, we think of this area as, well, it's there, and it's sort of, you know, the warehouse district was done first, and... But as you work and study the history of that area, that was actually Davenport's gateway. That was where the only bridge from the east was. So this area is really our historic gateway corridor to the city. And at one point was the, they lit it up in the 20s, it was the Great White Way, and there had been some nefarious activity that had gone on there historically a little bit, because the bridge, the railroad came there, and so there was an effort to really sort of sparkle, clean it up, you know, make it a little more respectable, because that is the old Bucktown area as well. So it really has a lot of history that we don't necessarily think of right away. I am going to be asking for an amendment next week, Your Honor, not an amendment, but ask that if we could write a letter of support for this National Register nomination from the council, I'll be asking the council if they will, you know, approve that amendment. Because my understanding is that as these go forward, now this will go to the State Committee to approve, and then to the National Register folks in DC. And it's nice to have that local support, so it not required, but it would be really wonderful to have a letter in support of what's going on, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. But I think the resolution is our letter of support, that's the council's letter. Are you looking for an additional duplicate letter?
Yes.
Does that help the application?
Yes. It kind of speaks to local support in a perhaps, maybe a little warmer way than simply a resolution.
So you're looking for something like specifically from the mayor?
Yes, and obviously, that would be, the council would need to approve that, so I wanted to mention that tonight. So I'll be asking for that next week.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council would like to comment on this item? It's very exciting for downtown. All right, last item, under this section of the agenda, resolution to convey a vacant lot at the northwest corner of Fifth and Brady Streets to VZ Properties in Third Ward. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? That, this item will move on. I would ask Alderman, I'm having a mind blank there, Ray Ambrose. Ambrose? We've been on this section for so long this evening. Alderman Ambrose to set the agenda.
Make a motion, we keep number two on discussion and the rest on the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, that ends this section, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rawson and Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Grip will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items on public safety this evening. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11 or 6 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Speed Limits by adding Jason Way from Veterans Memorial Parkway to the end of Jason Way Court as a 35 mile-per-hour street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 6 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Speed Limits by adding 76th Street from Northwest Boulevard to Division Street as a 40 mile-per-hour street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number three is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. We have three different sections. I will read through Section A and then ask for comment, Section B as well, and then Section C, we do not read. Ward one, Quick Shop, number 579, 2805 Telegraph Road, ownership update, license type E liquor. Quick Shop, number 583, 3129 Rockingham Road, ownership update, license type C beer. Quick Shop, number 584, 3624 West Locust Street, ownership update, license type C beer. Ward two, Pilot Travel Center, number 636, 8200 Northwest Boulevard, ownership update, license type C beer. Ward three, Antonella 2, 421 West Ripper Drive, Suite 5, outdoor area, license type beer, wine. Ward four, Quick Shop, number 577, 1732 Marquette Street, ownership update, license type C beer. Quick Shop, number 593, 303 West Locust Street, ownership update, license type C beer. Ward five, Quick Shop, number 578, 2242 East 12th Street, ownership update, license type C beer. Quick Shop, number 588, 1136 East Locust Street, ownership update, license type E liquor. Sixth ward, The Ridge, 4750 Utica Ridge Road, Suite 5, outdoor area, license type C liquor. Ward seven, Quick Shop, 586, 201 West 53rd Street, ownership update, license type C beer. Quick Shop, 587, 1670 West Kimberly Road, ownership update, license type C beer. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these licenses? Anyone from the council? These items will all move on. Item number, or item 3B is a request for waiver of 600-foot separation from childcare providers' rule. Ward six, The Ridge, 4750 Utica Ridge Road, Suite 5, outdoor area, license type C liquor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And 3C, we do not read, so that will conclude public safety this evening. And I would ask that Alderwoman Dickman would set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes public safety, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Dickman. Our next area is, third area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead the discussion. Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items on the Public Works Committee meeting this evening. Item number one is the first consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 8.14, which is a tree ordinance, to perform general language cleanup and clarify the following definitions of trees in the right-of-way maintenance of the city-owned trees permitting, licensing, and nuisance tree abatement process. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number two is the first consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic for the purposes of allowing the city of Davenport the ability to immobilize vehicles in lieu of towing and simplify the fine schedule. Do we have somebody from staff that can give us an overview of this?
Hello, Nicole Leeson, Public Works. This basically is doing two things. The first one is if a vehicle is in excessive amounts of parking tickets downtown, generally five parking tickets, or a large dollar volume, so perhaps has several handicap parking tickets, rather than tow the vehicle in violation, we would be able to immobilize it. So that would allow the person to come pay those back fines and get their vehicle right of way, as opposed to having to travel far to retrieve their car from a towing service. So this would really just address specifically those who are in arrears significantly on parking violations. The second piece is, right now, our parking violations range anywhere from $20 to $35, and it just is really confusing with writing tickets, making sure we select the right value. So we're proposing that we make all tickets $25, but in really to get to the heart of the issue with collections, once they are delinquent in payment of that parking ticket, it would add a collection fee, because right now, we are only adding a $5 collection fee when we send those to collections. We're not really recouping as much of the cost as we should be able to recoup. It costs us, whenever we send it to collections, at least $15 that we have to pay that collection agency. So we're proposing a $30 collection fee, because that would cover our costs of writing the ticket, turning over to collections, and offset that collection fee. So those are the major changes. Do you have any questions in regards to those?
Thanks, Nicole. Alderman Rawson.
Yeah, I just want to confirm, for the immobilization boot, that's a turnaround time of 48 hours?
Yes. Once it was there for 48 hours, we would then be able to tow the vehicle.
Okay. I was just having visions of it staying there forever.
Correct, yes.
Someone gets around it, cars taking up a parking space indefinitely into the future.
Correct.
So it'd be immobilized, I'd have two days to deal with it, if not, then we would tow it.
Then we are legally able to tow it after.
Okay.
Yep. We're planning to start with six to eight boots. So, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Don't mean to put you on the spot, but how many people would you say we have are doing this, we're dealing, creating this issue for us?
Several dozen right now. We have towed, we've been towing an average two to five a month.
Okay.
So, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone else from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimate cost for the alley resurfacing project between Leclerc Street and Farnham Street from Garfield Street to Columbia Avenue included in the alley resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution of acceptance of the FY1819 Sanitary Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation and Replacement Program completed by Kim Construction with a final cost of $1,127,149.30. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a motion authorizing city staff to approve the design, construction, and ongoing maintenance of the North Marquette Off-Road Bicycle Trail in the form of an agreement extension with the Friends of Off-Road Cycling. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I appreciate the group from the bicycle group and Parks, Mr. Dyson, working together and working out design, working this out to all satisfaction, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I'd like to reiterate what Alderman Mattson just said. There were some concerns at the beginning of this, and I think that our Parks Department did a wonderful job, as did Alderman Mattson, in bringing the groups together to make sure that the concerns that were brought up were taken care of. And I'd like to thank the group that is here for sticking around, because you got put at the end of the agenda and sat through a lot, and you're still here. But also, for stepping up. Basically, we have city land that was not being used, and you are now putting it towards good use. It is an amenity certainly for your neighborhood, maybe for the city at large, especially for bicycling, which we've always been a running community, but we are becoming a bicycling community with the Criterium and RagBri and all the good stuff that Fork has done across the greater Quad Cities. We have a number of really great biking trails, and now this is a smaller one, but one that's very important to the neighborhood. So I was happy to be a part of the process and work with your group and attend Alderman Mattson's meetings, and I'm very happy that this has come before us and that it's going to be solidified, and the Fork group has stepped up to help us out. So, thank you, thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a motion allowing the Public Works Director to enter into license agreements with a duration of one year or less for the use of solid waste and/or city bus assets as a means of advertising. Is there anybody from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number seven is a motion awarding a two-year contract with a possible one-year extension for low-voltage repair services to Tri-City Electric of Davenport, Iowa. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Condon, will you set the agenda, please?
I move to put all items on consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. That concludes Public Works, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Condon. Our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion, and Alderman Kuhl will set the agenda. Thank you, Your Honor. Open finance discussion for items. First one is a resolution approving the purchase of the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network System from Forensic Technology, Inc. of Largo, Florida, in the amount of $308,520. Anybody from the public want to comment? Counsel? Very good. This gives our police another tool in the identification of people doing bad things in our city, so we applaud everyone involved. Number two is a resolution approving the use of an Iowa State University bid contract for cell phone service to U.S. Cellular. An RFP was issued for these services and was to include any government entity in the state of Iowa, Contract 63554. Anyone from the public like to comment? Counsel? Very good. Item three, resolution adopting the Internal Revenue Service mileage rate when reimbursing employees for use of a personal vehicle. Anyone from the public like to comment? Counsel? Very good. Number four, resolution amending Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule. If I could have just a quick update from, did he leave? Sorry.
All the cycling.
All the cycling. So, fair enough, I think, a $1? Okay, I was going to try and paraphrase, but Mr. Dyson, quickly, if you would be kind enough, I apologize, I didn't look before I asked. If you could just quickly update our fee schedule changes for the public.
Sure. Chad Dyson, Parks and Rec Director. Basically, it's a schedule of fees that you're looking, our existing fees, there's one minor change in that we are proposing a dollar increase to several of our greens fees for our golf operations. Golf rounds have been relatively flat, they've come down from the decline we saw after the boom of the 90s golf trend to sort of stabilize. We find it as an opportunity to increase the rates to generate some additional revenue, which will help our operational costs, because those continue obviously to grow, and our revenues are tied directly to our expenditures when it comes to our golf operations. So it's a modest increase, it will keep us on par with existing courses in the area. We don't foresee a negative impact in rounds or golf usage because of it.
Thank you. And this is just the green fee? This isn't like cart rental or any of that, it's just the green fee?
There's green fees and cart.
Oh, and cart?
Yep.
So that's more than a dollar?
Yep.
So that's, that's a $2 increase?
Well, a dollar on the carts, dollar on greens, yep.
You can walk, that's right.
Can walk, correct, yes.
My only, and I'll probably support it, my only concern is the Red Hawk one, where it's a lot of kids do Red Hawk, so that's just a concern for me. But this will be, help with increase of maintenance on our, and some need it, like the Bridget Red Hawk that I keep asking about.
the bridge at Red Hawk that I keep asking about.
Which is gonna get painted, correct?
Well, paint. Okay. Good.
We're gonna get that taken care of.
Thank you.
That it'll help us, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone from council? Okay, very good. And then, the next items are just for your information only. We put that on there so you can see it, so I'll ask Alderman Kluw if he'd recommend an agenda.
I move that all four items move forward to consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All, Your Honor, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderman Kluw. Are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Seeing none. Is there any public with business tonight?
I'll be brief.
My name's Dale Gilmore. I live in the sixth ward. I have brought up a couple times that I think that the budget meeting should be at least audio recorded. There was a discussion between Alderman Mattson, I guess I can say that, and I, a couple years ago, when the airshow was going to be partially sponsored or funded by the city, and then Alderman Mattson said, now, if it doesn't happen, then this fund will go to this area. And he and I had a disagreement, friendly disagreement, as to where that funding would go. Had we had even an audio recording, that would have been totally clarified. I don't, you know, if somebody's got a cellphone, just set it on the table. It's not rocket science. I don't see a problem with doing that. So, that's just my two cents worth.
Thank you. Pardon me? Yes, you might want to mention our new plan, very quickly.
As we've discussed with the council, we actually intend to take video, including audio, so we'll have a formal record of the meetings that way.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? See, yes ma'am, you want to come on up?
Yes.
Sure. Please, your name and address, please.
My name is Kathleen Hurl, and I live in the third ward. And in two thousand and five, I took a trip to Durango, Colorado, and was gonna look at their stagecoaches in lieu of the crude oil crisis, because we have like forty-plus years left of crude oil around the world. And, so anyway, I have since then acquired a DBA and a couple of LLCs to start stagecoach line, and I just wanted to bring that up in case the city's interested. And also, I had another idea, and that was to, in my, I live in a three-story building, and I was gonna talk to my landlord about possibly developing it into like a teaching place to learn things from the past, like soap making and things like that. And also, I just had one other things, and one other thing, and that was to address something for the youth in the area that seemed to not have a, they're like without direction, and that is to hire them like a minimum wage to work in the city, picking up debris on the sidewalks, and possibly hire them by the city to shovel the sidewalks that don't get sidewalk, or don't get shoveled during the snow season. And I think that's pretty much what I had to say.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one. Are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none. Well, an order move to go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing and performance of individuals in closed session, as requested by those individuals pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one dash, I mean, point five. There's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kluw?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you very much. Council's adjourned, and again, we will be, we will be ending the session here in chambers, and we'll finish from the executive session. Thank you all for being here this evening. This part of the meeting is adjourned. We'll meet up in the second floor conference room, large conference room. As quickly as humanly possible.